I'm the Southward. My representative is our board, that's right.
I'd like to call this November 11, Council Budget Meeting to Order. And before we get started, we have Amy McElvein here with Debbie Fine and Jim Fine on the AOC Committee who would like to do a brief presentation.
Thank you. For the opportunity to be here tonight, Mr. D. Giuseppe, I'd like to introduce Deb Fine, a member of the AOC Board and also a former educator at Bristol High School. We're here to report on the progress of the Academic Oversight Committee. So, okay, so, hold on one second. There we go. So, in this, we had a summer camp in 2021. It was the first camp after the onset of COVID-19. As you recall, in the summer of 2020, we did not have camp. In the summer camp of 2021, we had 307 students from Bristol Borough School District and St. Mark's School attending the 21st Century Learning Center Summer Camp. The footnote I'd like to point out here is this is the first time that St. Mark's School hosted and convened a summer camp. The subject areas that were addressed included literacy, math, recreation, art, and theater for Snyder Girardi Elementary School and the St. Mark's School students. An important point in the grant is, is that the summer camp has, cannot just be about recreation and fun. There has to be an academic component, which is why those subject areas are addressed. The summer camp also offered remediation and credit recovery classes for the Bristol Middle School located at Snyder, Snyder Girardi and the Bristol High School students. And all of this came together through the partnership and the generosity with the Bristol Borough Council and the $10,000 grant that you awarded the 21st Century, the Academic Oversight Committee earlier in the calendar year. I keep going in the wrong direction. So I just want to share a sample of the types of programs that the AOC, the Academic Oversight Committee, provides to the Bristol Borough School District and St. Mark's School. Bristol Borough launched a Microsoft certification program a few years ago. It was a pilot program. Recognizing some of the constraints and limitations of the Bristol Borough School District, we went over to Bucks County Community College. Bucks County Community College embraced the idea, worked with us to launch this pilot, and they delivered the, the first two years of the program. This year, the program is again supporting 10 Bristol High School students. They're learning Word and Excel. If they, the course is administered by Microsoft, Microsoft Corporation. It's their products and their test. The students, if they complete each module successfully, Microsoft issues a medallion directly to their LinkedIn profile. The course is being offered this year both virtually and in person. Another course that we're providing is a Makerspace for the Bristol Middle School. This is an opportunity for the kids to go into a room and really touch and feel and build things, and it creates all sorts of free thinking and self-confidence. So we provided a $10,000 grant for that at the Bristol Middle School. And it really is consistent with the way the workforce is moving, the Makerspace movement. We also provided a $7,000 grant to the Snyder Girardi Elementary School for an Art Regis program. This is delivered in partnership with the Bristol Riverside Theater. It's directed at grades one and two and kindergarten. We learned yesterday, Deb and I had the, or the opportunity to see Art Regis in operation yesterday. We were guests at a, their first theatrical performance, and it was, it was terrific. We also provided a $5,000 grant to St. Mark's School to acquire the Leap Frog, Leap Frog Program, which is directed at pre-K, which is the four-year-old group, to get them ready for the academic experience in the higher grades. And Deb, do you want to offer some additional comments?
Sure. First of all, thank you also for having us here tonight. And just to let you know that the AOC not only provides the cash grants, but we also offer our time at especially the 21st Century Learning Centers After School Program. Mary Giswalde and I have been working since the beginning of the year with the tutoring program that is ongoing at the elementary school, and there's also a tutoring program at the high school. Mary and I have been involved in the elementary school for the most part up to this point. And we provide support for the tutors, and we also help record test scores and so on for the students who participate in the program. So this is something that's ongoing, and we will be doing this throughout the year. In addition, one other contribution that we make every year, and I know you've heard about it many times before, is to the Bristol High School Writers' Voice Program. It's a program now that has gone on for 25 years, and they had a, sort of a landmark program this year because the two Writers' Voice Programs from this past spring, 2021, and the spring of 2020 were both programs that were unable to be completed with the sojourn at Silver Bay YMCA Conference Center in upstate New York. However, both of those groups of students were able to travel to New York State this fall. And so I think it was 30 through 36 students participated and went to Silver Bay as a culmination of their Writers' Voice project. And this is a poetry writing project and a creative writing project that is offered by the district and sponsored through the interdisciplinary program, but it's offered to more than just 10th grade students in the interdis program. It's expanded to other students that are interested in taking advantage of the program. And it is taught by a full professor from the University of Pennsylvania. Deborah Burnham is an English professor at Penn, and she comes up weekly for, bi-weekly, sorry, twice a week for a whole month and works with the students for 90 minutes every, twice a week for that program to help them with their writing and so forth. And AOC has been helping to support that program for years as well.
Thank you. Any questions on the programs? I want to share with you also that we are working diligently right now on two other programs that we're going to announce in the new year. They're going to be very exciting. One of those programs, and just like the Microsoft Certification Program, has caught the attention of the intermediate unit and the Bucks County Community College, and they're all jumping on board. One thing I do want to add, two things I want to add about the Microsoft Certification Program before we move to the next slide and the last slide, is if the students complete each of those programs successfully, they get three credits towards their college degree. So there are, the financial impact is really significant. Now, this is a program that the Bristol Borough School District and the AOC launched and piloted three years ago. It's now being used as a, it's being offered all across the county, by Bucks County Community Colleges to high schools all over the county. It's a revenue source for them now. And it looks like the, the new, the other new idea that I'm not going to tell you about tonight, I'll tell you about later, is going to do the same thing for them. But all that creativity, I just want to point out, is coming out of Bristol Borough. Okay, so in order to put all these things together, we are doing a 2021 raffle this year. And the raffle is in, is in place of, or temporary replacement for the Bristol Fall Classic, which we typically had on the Saturday before Thanksgiving. But because of the ongoing concern, the general concern about COVID-19, we're suspending that again this year and doing the raffle. And the raffle's necessary and important to help fund these additional programs provided to the Bristol Borough School District and the St. Mark's School. The tickets are $75 per person. We encourage everyone to get creative on how they want to make that purchase, you know, go in with a group of colleagues at work, go in with family and friends. Tickets are available for purchase at three convenient locations. One is the Bristol Borough Tax Office on the first floor of this building, Great Ideas by Anne and Mignone Jewelry Store. The first prize winner, which will be all, the tickets, the winning tickets will be pulled on December 7th. The first prize is $3,000, second prize is $2,000, and the third prize is $1,000. So 100% of all the raffle proceeds go to AOC programs, and that's really the important point. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here. We appreciate the partnership with the Bristol Borough Council, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. Okay.
Amy, I have one.
Okay.
I'm sorry. You say here 307 attendees in 2021.
Mm-hmm.
Do you remember what it was in 2019? Because we didn't have it in 2020.
We didn't have it in 2020. Then these, that number, I, I don't have the precise number for 2019, but it's pretty consistent. It might be a little lower. I'm thinking it was like 325.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering.
Because there are some people that are still being very cautious, so.
Yeah, okay.
The only thing I'd like to say, I think Council recognized, maybe five years ago or more, that by partnering, partnering with the AOC, there was so much that we can do together, and our $10,000 was, to me, the best money we could spend. Because of you guys put into it, and the time you put into it, and how successful this program is, it's probably the best thing we ever did, so.
Thank you very much.
We're always here to support you, and like I said, if you ever need any more or you ever need anything, don't hesitate to come here and ask for anything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I mean, thank you for all your, your hard work also.
And I think it's important that people at home know that this is for the kids, and that they should ask about it and get involved.
Yep. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, there was some confusion on tonight's meeting. Some council thought we were meeting Tuesday. The email said Tuesday or Thursday. I think some people thought we were meeting Tuesday, and that's why I think Lorraine and Greg got confused on the day. I don't know if Dave, the same thing happened with Dave. So we're going to go through with our budget meeting. There's nobody here from the public unless you guys have some questions on the budget. Jacklin's back there if you have any questions. But I'm going to have Mr. Dillon go through the budget. It's a balanced budget with zero tax increase. I think everything's going good. And Jim, why don't you run through the entire budget then?
Thank you, Amy.
Yes, thank you. Have a good night.
Have a fun night.
I'll buy a couple tickets here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was nice to see you.
Couple little comments before we drop into the budget. At the Sewer Authority meeting the other night, they asked the council would consider changing the name of the, of the Bristol Borough Water and Sewer Authority to just the Bristol Borough Sewer Authority. So there's no objections. The solicitor will put a, an advertisement in the paper for a proposed ordinance for that name change. So, because it is somewhat confusing, confusing when people start talking about water when the borough hasn't had the water system since like about 1996, so.
That makes sense, not the, yes.
So I think everybody, so we'll start that journey, and in case we run into a problem, we'll just have to back off. But I think it'll be a lot easier if it's just called the Bristol Borough Sewer Authority. Advertisements will be in the newspaper Sunday for anyone interested in being the Chief of Police, as well as, and the deadline for those resumes will be December 3rd. Also, there'll be a advertisement in the paper for an application for resumes for public works sewer operator, and those resumes or applications are due November 22nd. The budget's presently scheduled to be, go ahead.
So November 22nd, we're advertising for a
That's the deadline.
For the sewer for you.
For public works slash sewer operator.
So anybody at home that's interested, that want to apply for this job, put an application with the borough, correct?
Correct.
And then the next one is the police chief, and the deadline for that is December 3rd?
Correct.
And anyone interested or know of anyone interested, please file an application and bring it into the borough or, can they email it, Jim?
Yes. It says email in the.
Can we put this up on the Borough Channel booth advertisements? Maybe Matt can scroll these or between the meetings, and if somebody's interested, they can also say it.
I have a question, Mr. Dillon. If any applications or resumes were sent prior to this, will they be considered or they need to resend them?
I would suggest that they're, they should be resented. I think they should be resented.
Thank you.
I have a comment. I think there was some confusion at Monday's meeting when, when it was discussed about not hiring a search, search consultant for this. And it's, I just want to let people know that it's not that the Borough Council is doing it on their own, through our insurance company and through a couple lawsuits that we've been involved with, with the police and other things. We have a labor attorney who will work with our solicitor, and so it's not just up to us how we're getting this information. And also, there's been a change in some of the laws where it was almost like there was restricted information that we couldn't ask for, where you might not get the answer. And these laws have been changed where now other communities have to report to, you know, when they're asked questions on different things about staff or why someone left or, or resigned or whatever. So council's not just doing this on their own. We have professionals that are involved that we think is, it's going to be
Excuse me.
Much more economical and more efficient to do it this way. And, and we've all been through this when we hired Chief Henry, so we're kind of used to what needs to get done, so. I just want to put that out there.
I, yeah, Michael. I'm sorry, and while we're on that, could you also, Mr. President, just maybe explain to people again that currently there will be an acting officer that we didn't make a decision that he
So let me explain the process again, because I think there's some misunderstanding with this. We met in executive session for, we had, called it a six o'clock executive session, and we finished right when we walked out for the meeting. We invited Maria, who's our newly-elected council, a part woman to the meeting, because eventually she may be voting on what's going on, and we thought it'd be nice to have her involved in this, and we asked everyone first, and nobody from council had any objections from Maria being there. So we discussed different options on how we wanted to proceed. Do we want to hire a search committee? Do you want to do it in-house? Do you want to just hire somebody? And I think the consent, well, it was eight people decided that we can do it in-house. And like Louis said, we're not doing it like this isn't, I'm asking the questions, or Louis asked, or Maria or Betty. It's, we're using Chris Gerber, who is our labor attorney. We're using our borough manager, and we're using our solicitor, who's going to have slave questions. They're going to look at resumes. They're going to recommend to council what they think, and we're going to sit around and we're going to discuss this and try to come up with the, the best person for the job. The borough hired a search committee years ago, and I've been here, this is my, I'm finishing my 20th year, I never thought I'd be here this long, and we hired a search committee that went out and found the borough manager. And he came, and I think he was from Texas or somewhere out there. Probably lasted about two months, and that was a ton of money we spent. And then, thank God, we found Jim to come back. We told him this would be an easy job, he could golf, and he hasn't golfed in 20 years. But that search committee, they found somebody with great credentials, and it just wasn't a fit for Bristol. I think when we hired the committee to find the chief, police chief, I think they did a great job. They found Chief Henry, who is well-respected in town and everybody liked. But there were some things that we didn't like about the search committee, not the chief, but the way they went about things. So look, the last time they, the previous administration, when I think there was an opening, they hired Arnie Porter. They just brought somebody up from the ranks. Arnie was here how many years as a chief? He did a great job. He was well-liked through the community. So, you know, sometimes the guy you're looking for is right under your nose. I don't know. But we're going to give all our police officers downstairs an opportunity to want to apply, because in the first search, when it was for Chief Henry, they weren't included, a lot of them, because they didn't meet the qualifications. But now they do, because there's more experience, some guys got more time. So we want to make sure everybody has a fair and honest opportunity at this job. And nobody that I know of sitting here, including myself, has made a decision on who the next chief is going to be. Because we feel if we did that, or we made a commitment to someone, we'd be doing a disservice to Bristol Borough. So we're all going to have an open mind, and we're going to rely on our labor attorney and our borough manager to advise us on how we want to proceed with this chief. As far as what Michael said, in, I think it's the borough code, and I'm not sure, but I'm 99.9% sure, is that when we have an opening or if something happens to the chief or he's on vacation, the chief of police, which is Mr. Steve Henry, always emailed council in his six years and said, I'm going to be out of town, I'm going to be on vacation, whatever the case may be, I'm putting the officer in charge, as was always Joe Morris, because Joe Morris is the senior officer. So what's going to happen as of Thursday morning, Sergeant Morris will become the officer in charge, not acting chief, not temporary chief, he's going to be the officer in charge. And until, and he understands that, and he's going to work with the mayor and the manager. And look, council doesn't run the police department, the mayor does. And we're going to assist Joe in any way we can to help him out with this, but he will be the officer in charge, just like he was for the last six years when Chief Henry was either on vacation or was away, or whatever the issue may be. So that's the process.
Thank you.
It's not council's decision, it's the procedure that has always been in place before we even got here.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Hopefully I cleared everything up, and everybody tonight, when they start writing, they'll, hopefully they print the truth.
All right, Mr. Dillon. All right. As I was saying, I think the present goal is to have the budget adopted at the December 6th meeting of council. So on your desk this evening was a summary of all the budgets that we have that are before you, and some of them deal with tax millages and others are non-tax-millage budgets that council oversees. And the total amount of those budgets is $12,510,937. That's what the 2022 proposed budget's total. The, there's a couple major issues that are happening that are very fluid at the moment, and, you know, council will, as soon as I get additional information, I'll provide it to council, and council can decide. The county is pursuing a, what they call a co-responder program, and this deals with having a, like a social worker-type person respond to a police incident after the matter has been resolved where needed, where that person can then talk to the individual involved. Now, this program's been going on and Ben Salem for a number of months, and right now, supposedly Bristol Borough, Bristol Township, and Tullytown are going to be the next group that the county is focusing on. And if council and the township and the borough, Tullytown, agree and pursue this, the county will pick up the costs for the first two years of the program. Thereafter, the municipalities will have to share that cost. So two weeks ago, representatives of Bristol Township Police Department were supposed to meet with Ben Salem Police Department, and they were going to come back and bring us all up to date. So as of today, I reached out to the township and asked them for an update, and I haven't gotten that. So anyhow, and I, I know the council president has been working with the chairman of the county commissioners, Diane Marsaglia, on this, so I think it's, seems like a very worthwhile program, and so.
I think that, not to interrupt Jim, but I spoke to Diane, Commissioner Marsaglia, and she ran this program by me, and I thought that we'd be interested, I thought we could sustain it. And when she explained that, you know, we're joining forces with Bristol Township, and I think now Tullytown wants to get involved and Salem, and it's a good program. I know she does a lot, and her heart's in this mental health field and trying to do the right thing for a lot of people in need and crisis. So I have no problem working with this program. Hopefully, it's a good program, the way she explained it, and the managers, I think, going to a meeting soon, Jim, or if there's a meeting coming up?
There's a meeting at, at the Community College on December 2nd, countywide, at Social Services and Law Enforcement Forum Agenda. And right now, we'll have at least two representatives of the borough there, so we'll just leave it at that. But the Attorney General of the state is supposed to be there, leading, Josh Shapiro, he's supposed to have the opening remarks, as well as District Attorney Weintraub, as well as the county commissioners. So it's an all-day conference at the Community College, so. But anyhow, that's, and our solicitor's looking at the, the agreements between the county and Ben Salem, and so maybe we'll have something at the December 6th or the, maybe December 13th meeting, to see how things go, because there's just so much going on at the moment. The other item that is a significant issue that's out there, I just want to make sure council's aware of it, is that the chiefs of the emergency rescue squads throughout the county requested of the county commissioners to fund an $8 million for the rescue squads. And there's 13 rescue squads in the county. The county commissioners have apparently taken a position that they're willing to fund $6 million of that $8 million if the municipalities, you know, amongst themselves, fund that other $2 million. So we're gathering additional information on that. What that comes down to is the Bucks County Rescue Squad, which we're, the borough is serviced by, along with a portion of Bristol Township, would receive a total of $446,000 under that program, if in fact, between the borough and the township, we contributed approximately $89,000. So that's an ongoing, and that decision's got to be made by the, the end of December, so. But there are But there are, you know, some questions out there, and, you know, so hopefully that can be resolved at the December 13 meeting. And last but not least, before I start going strictly into the budget, on your desk is a copy of the sewer budget, year-end estimate for this year, as well as the proposed 2022 budget. It was reviewed by the Sewer Authority Tuesday evening, and it'll be on their agenda in December for final adoption. But as part of that is, is an attachment that shows some of the capital projects that the authority is undertaking right now, that are under contract. They have over $800,000 worth of capital improvements that are under contract now. The next page shows authority projects that the authority and our engineer and staff feels that needs to be addressed in the next couple of years. And they total $3,285,000. We're certainly hunting for any grants that are available, but right now, there's nothing available. But, like I said, we'll continue to look for those grants, but some of these projects probably in the next few months will probably have to go out the bid, because they are very time-sensitive. And the third page is future pending projects, no immediate need, but they total about $2,170,000. So, you know, it's a little sewer system, it's an important sewer system, but it's an old system, and was basically built in the 1970s. So, we're continuing to try to modernize it, and, but that's the background on the sewer. Now, in terms of the overall 2022 proposed budgets, they were distributed to council. One mill in 2022 is currently projected to be $75,000. One mill of tax revenue for 2021 was calculated at $72,000. The overall 2022 proposed budget reflects no increase for 2022. As a reminder, in 2021, council adopted a budget that decreased taxes by 6.5 mils, which was 11.2% decrease in municipal taxes. So, in the chart, you can see all the millages stay the same, debt service remains at one mill. And just a side note, Ralph, I think when we first started getting involved in the budgets, the debt service millage equated to about 50% of all the real estate taxes that the residents had to pay. So, we're now down to one mill, which represents 1.9% of all the taxes that are coming in. So, it's not good to try to operate off of debt all the time. So, we certainly decreased it from almost 50% a year to 1.9%.
Big difference, Jim.
Yeah, I think it, and it shows.
And I know you have a lot to do with this also.
Yeah, I think it shows. General fund currently, there is a projected year-end balance of $308,000. The proposed budget funds a police department of 12 full-time officers and five part-time officers. The proposed budget calls for funding the pension plans for the full amount of minimum municipal obligations for 2022. The American Rescue Plan Act funds have been included in the general fund budgets for 2021 and 2022. The funds amount to $501,000 each year. So, if you look on the general fund budget, they're reflected at the bottom of the revenue page, page two or page three. There's ongoing requirements and restrictions on the way you can spend the funds. We're trying to stay on top of that, but so right now, we've placed it in the general fund, and we'll monitor these various regulations that are coming down. One of the requirements was that we were supposed to have certain forms filled out by Friday of two weeks ago, and Angie worked on it, and she had to come in over the weekend, and wasn't too successful. And we worked on it again on Monday. That Monday, we wound up being on a conference Zoom call with somebody out of Boston. We went through everything, we thought we had everything resolved, which we did, basically. And they said, why are you rushing? We changed the requirement, you don't have to have this completed now until March of 2022. Of course, this doesn't show anywhere on any of their websites, but, so it's very frustrating. But anyhow, just want to mention that that's where the money is sitting at the moment. We did receive the first $501,000. If adopted, as noted, and the budget all meshes through the year, the proposed balance at the end of 12/31/2022 will be $469,000. So, it's somewhat optimistic and a big change from some of the prior years, where we were definitely holding our breath every, every day. Fire fund remains the same at three mils. The park and recreation remains the same at 3.62 mils. Rescue squad remains the same at two mils. Street lighting remains at 4.35 mils. Special road remains at 2.42 mils. The capital improvement budget, it's recommended, proposed that we purchase a new animal control vehicle and one new code enforcement vehicle in 2022. The current ACO vehicle is a 2009 vehicle with close to 100,000 miles, and it's in bad condition. The other code enforcement vehicle is a 2008 Ford Focus with 178,000 miles, and is in bad condition. Refuge collection budget costs remain the same at $395 per unit. This rate has been the same rate that's been charged since 2016. And shortly, Portnoy will be sending letters out to those delinquents. They had to go through an additional update on new regulations that came out in the last two weeks, too. So, that's been the holdup. So, anyone that hasn't paid, you know, everything's been turned over to them, so they'll be dealing with Portnoy very shortly, so. But anyhow, the proposed rate, again, will remain the same in 2022. The investment funds, which is the $24 million, reflects the current anticipated year-end interest income for the end of this year at $381,000. And the projected year-end income next year, December 31, 2022, is projected at $336,000. So, it's a decrease, given the current market conditions. State highway aid budget, the cost for spending $106,778 to meet the bond obligations associated with the 2009 road program. The 15-year bond road program will be defused in 2025. So, we're almost at that, we're getting close to defeating that bond also. Per the state Borough Code, council will need to adopt a budget by December 31 of this year, and because of the, you had elections this year, you, the council may reopen the budget early in 2022, so. But that's basically a quick summary of it.
I just think that everybody sitting here, and I know there's some people, Ray's coming in here, and Michael's been here for years, and Betty's been here 18 years, I think you guys, everybody should be so proud that what we have accomplished, and we don't need to pat ourselves on the back, I'm just giving you guys compliments for having, you know, stand up to a lot of things that, don't do this, and don't do that, and we kept pushing forward, and we got a great town, the budgets, we're in good shape with everything, and just keep doing the right thing and keep moving forward.
Absolutely.
And Jim, we can't do without you.
We can't do without, well, you know, your backing and all. And I think, based on what I just heard, I think we're going to meet on December 13 to adopt the budget, so scratch December 6.
Yeah, we'll make, yeah, it's the second week of, second one, or whatever.
Second day of the central.
Yeah. So, does anybody have any questions on the budget, or, I mean, we don't need to go through every page of the budget. I mean, we had these budgets, has everybody looked at them? When you have no tax increase, things are going good, we decreased taxes, I don't know what else we can do, really.
None is good.
I know there's some things we want to accomplish over the next year or two. We need to start looking at some roads again that need to be redone. We need some capital improvement for this building. We have some issues with our clock tower, it's leaking, and it's, it's pretty expensive to have it fixed. We're trying to find a company that would even deal with that. I mean, none of us have any idea where we can find some of that news, you know, what's the issue is. We need some vehicles and, you know, just, like I said, keep plugging along and keep moving the town in the right direction.
And we've always supplied the best services for the people of this town.
Yeah. The other thing is, if you see a street light out on your street, or a street light out anywhere in town, we pay a flat rate, so we pay our electric bill whether there's 1,000 lights on, or whether there's 300 lights on. So, if you see a street light that's out, please report it, because, you know, we don't go up and down every single street every day, and there, on every telephone pole, there's a pole number. All you need to do is call the Borough and say, the light in front of my house is going off and on, or the light in front of my house is off, and this is the pole number, so we can come out and fix them, especially, you know, it gets darks earlier with kids on the street and all, so that just helps us out. We want to get the lights fixed, if you know of any light that's, that's out. Besides the budget, don't forget, we have our tree lighting that, Friday, after Thanksgiving, at 6 o'clock, the trees should be lit by 6:30. We have the Bristol Riverside Theater is going to be out to do some songs with the kids, Santa Claus will be there for the kids, and it should be a fun night. And then the next day, we have our famous Christmas parade that's back, that comes down from Farragut Avenue, down Pond to Mill, and down Mill Street, and ends at McGyone Jewelry Shop on Mill Street. Thank you, Tim. I don't have anything more.
The only thing I, I think should be mentioned about our budget is, there are some things that are just out of our control, like the pension fund, which is a defined benefit pension. And if you look, private industry has more or less gotten away from defined benefit, because it's expensive, it's guesswork, and actuarials, you get three different actuarials to give you the number, and you get three different answers. And it seems like our state still has that with our police departments, with our municipal workers, and this is something that, you know, as individuals, when you talk to your state senators or your state representatives, you should really be putting pressure on them to, to do, you know, to do away with this, this program, to make it a more affordable, affordable program, because we're not going to be able to afford it. You know, we have to do away with other things that would benefit our town, to pay our pensions. And I think, I think we should have to start putting pressure on the state to redefine how they're going to put these out in the future.
I mean, like you said, Louis, we have a minimum obligation that we have to come up with, and it's almost impossible to meet these obligations, because they keep getting higher and higher. If you go back, I imagine, 10 years ago till now, it may have been, how much a year?
2000, let's say 2007, the minimum municipal obligation was $245,000. In 2022, it'll be $539,000, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, a lot of money, and, you know.
And that's just for the non-uniform. For the police, the minimum municipal obligation in 2005 was $158,000. In 2022, it's going to be $510,000.
It's beyond. It's beyond contrarian. You can't pay these kind of numbers. Like Louis said, they got to go into a defined benefit. But don't forget, we're underfunded, just like everybody else is underfunded, but the state is billions, not millions, billions of dollars underfunded. And nobody knows where all this money's going to come from at some point. But you try to do the best you can, all of our people that are retired get their check every month, and they will always get their check every month. So, we're not in any kind of dire, you know, stray world, we're not going to be able to make these payments. And like Louis said, the actuary, you get three different actuaries in a room, they're all going to come up with a different minimum obligation that you would have to pay. So, we're doing everything we can, we're meeting our obligations, last year and the year before, we did not meet the entire thing, but, you know, everything's fine. There's nothing we can do, just like the state, school pensions, the teachers' pensions are underfunded, and something has to happen. You know, everybody's kicking the can down the road, but eventually, you know, we're going to have to figure it out. All right, any more questions?
The thing is, but Dylan, for all this work on this, I know it's.
And Angie, Angie, and staff, and everybody. Kevin Everett did a great job his first year doing it.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Back to your buddy, meeting adjourned.